Can you hear me now? Just, can you hear, can you hear me now? Welcome to the November 21st meeting of the Mobile City Planning Commission. I'd like to take a moment to review our general operating procedures. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberations session. In the public hearing session, an application or a group application on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentation. Commission members ask questions if any. Members of the public make their comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item, thank you, Ms. Thompson. And four against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the committee. After four minutes, a loud beep will indicate one minute left to speak, and at this point, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or the audience. And please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce that the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will, will be an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into deliberations session. In the deliberations session, the commissioners discuss each application with input staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. The commissioners then vote on each application. Results of the voting can be learned from the planning department. With the city council making final decision. Please turn off all sounds at this time. Commissioners and staff, please remember, turn on your microphones when speaking. I'll call role. My name is Leva Latham. Mr. Jay Stubbs.
Here.
Mr. Bill Goodlow.
Here.
Ms. Shirley Sessions.
Here.
Mr. Don Henry.
Here.
Ms. Beth Rich.
Here.
Mr. Ann Berger.
Here.
And Mr. Taylor Acheson.
Here.
We have a quorum. I'll now call application number one, the west terminus of Windgate Gate extending to the south terminus of Wigan Drive. Applicant present? And in agreement with all of the recommendations? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? Thank you very much. Number two, 3450 Gerby Road. Is the applicant present? Is there anyone here to speak? Oh, sorry. I was wondering where you were.
Snuck up on you. Bobby McBride, Bureau of Engineering. We have been in touch with planning and have made some revisions to the plans that we have for PU Do subdivision for this application. Just had a little more time to work some details out on it, but spoke with them today and in saying that, we would like to ask for a holdover rather than withdrawal. We have a plan ready to submit today. We turned it in. Understand that they've already got the reviews ready for the December 5th hearing, but we'd like to ask for the 19th for the second meeting in December if we could, and give us a chance to bring this back to you.
Requests for holdover are most often granted. If you are here to speak either in favor of this application or against it, you may do so now, or you may wait until we call it again on December the 19th, assuming the holdover is granted. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Mr. McBride, would you like to say anything further?
Thank you.
Anybody else here would like to speak for this application? Is there anyone here that would like to speak against it? Thank you. We'll move on to number three, which is 3771 The Cedars. The applicant present? And in agreement with all the recommendations? He has indicated so. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? We will move on to number four. 265 Woodlands Avenue. Applicant present? The applicant is present, indicated agreement with the recommendations. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? Thank you. Number five, the South Cedar West Street. Delwood Place subdivision. Applicant present? The applicant is present and has indicated agreement with all of the recommendations. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? You may have up to four.
Nice Paul Stoltz, Stuart surveying. Our client, our clients on Durandie Drive are not planning any construction or development at this time. Therefore, we're not in agreement with the construction of a cul-de-sac or turnaround at the end of Durandie Drive. We would like to have this maybe attached to a land disturbance permit, maybe in the future if they do plan construction of any development of any kind. You know, this could be addressed then, but at this time, the purpose of the property was to keep it green space, is to keep it private, and, and that's the plan at this time, so.
Mr. Stewart, which item are you referring to?
Number one.
Number one?
Dedication and construction of a cul-de-sac turnaround. We could see some dedication going on, but not, not construction at this time.
I might recall this was the one where, if I remember correctly, the owners, several of the owners within Delwood formed an LLC to buy this, several of them intending to bring these properties into their backyards. But that plan has not been submitted yet, and that's why the staff acquired the cul-de-sac, because if this is approved and recorded without a cul-de-sac, they could still build houses on it. I'll turn it over to Margaret as far as whether or not they would allow it to be approved with that note on the plat.
The problem with, once you put it a lot number and you have a legal lot of record, you can build one house on each lot as it is zoned. If you, the analysis of the staff report, we're recommending that if the cul-de-sac is to not be constructed, that the properties that adjoin this in Delwood, that they be brought in and create one large lot. If you look up, this would be a lot, this would be the lot, and so forth, going on down. And then denial of direct access, access to Duran Drive. But once you have lot, lot number on there, they're legal lots of record.
Just for clarification, are the lots, the way they've got them plotted out here on this application, they, the lines line up with the existing lots to the, to the east, I guess?
Sir, if you, yes, sir, if you look at the detailed site plan, you can see the lot lines or of the adjoining properties are kind of coming over and-
Okay.
If I, I recall this fairly well, and when it, this was property originally owned by the city of Mobile, and then sold to what was represented, although it was not part of the sale agreement, it should have been. But the idea was everyone in Delwood was going to extend their, their lot out. When this came back in, I addressed this when it came in as a subdivision and showed these different lots, these six lots, because then I knew that it basically created legal lots of record.
Yes, ma'am.
But the idea that now you're going to back off just one of them, then you'll never be able to get a proper cul-de-sac turnaround. And, and there's, there's tents right across the street from this on Durant. So, is there a thought that this group that I'm going to assume still owns, I don't know, that's not something discussed as commissioner, planning commissioners, but why doesn't everyone come in and just now do the extension of their backyards so that it becomes their property? Because that was the understanding.
That's what you were suggesting, right?
Yeah.
If the cul-de-sac is not to be built, that is staff's recommendation.
I like that, yeah. Good.
But we can't force them to do that. So, if it, you know, if it gets denied, you say staff's recommendation.
Is either build the cul-de-sac and then have six lots?
Build, build the cul-de-sac as recommended. We, we recommend that condition remain, or the applicant can request a holdover and resubmit incorporating these lots into the adjoining ones on Delwood.
When we sold the property, we did not sell that area, because there has always been a need for a proper turnaround on Durant. And so that was not part of the property that the city transferred, and the residents said, "That's fine, because we don't want to build on that side anyway." So, it was, and the assumption was that someday the city might have come in and used, but if they're going to have these six lots, they, they should definitely, we should have got, and that was one of the conditions when they came in to get the six lots, correct?
I'm not familiar with the stipulations placed on the transfer of the property. Now, based on this survey, a portion of the turnaround that's existing is on the property that has been sold, based on this survey. It's on the southern-
And that's the reason, keep it as an entire subdivision-
Portion of lot six.
And not let it get picked off one at a time. Do the whole plan as originally, you know, resented, or make this a proper development that has a proper turnaround.
Question for staff, is there no, there is no way to tie the construction of the turnaround with the first, if there were to ever be a building permit pulled to develop a house on one of these lots?
Yeah, I don't know, know if, if the inner, and I don't want to pass the buck here, I don't know if the inner workings of the city's process would catch that. You know, yeah, you could say they can't get a building permit, but heck, we've seen permits issued when conditions from years ago, you know, weren't, weren't-
I know this is a little different.
Yeah, if that happens.
We don't require sidewalks until the houses are built in residential subdivisions, correct?
The other thing to realize is, this is a subdivision. We're looking for certain things to be done before the plat is signed. We would be looking for the turnaround to be built before this plat is signed. Taking the subdivision and then going back with a building permit, that's going to be, that's going to be difficult. I'm not going, I wouldn't say it's impossible, but it is not-
Opens the door for something to be missed in the future.
Not an ideal situation.
When it was here a few months ago, what was it, just they came for a one lot subdivision?
They have the approval in place, pretty much as recommended by the staff now, including the construction of the cul-de-sac.
So, what's this application for? Those, those six have already been approved?
They, to rid, to rid the condition of-
Simply remove that condition.
Of the construction of the cul-de-sac.
I thought this coming back was to, was to do just that, remove that condition for, because before, I think it was maybe contemplated that there was going to be more traffic on Durant, so you would have to be, that previous development would have had to have done it. Here, maybe the applicant can address that, is the intent not for those abutting property owners to acquire those properties, really to be part of their, their own lots ultimately? Maybe some of them do bring it back and make one, one lot record so they're not getting two tax bills? I mean, maybe can you-
Some may, you know, and, and I attended a pre-purchase meeting with them, and one of the questions was the construction of a cul-de-sac, would it be, you know, part of the deal? Would they have to do this? And, and there's one-
Yeah, I don't think they thought that that was what they were going to be required to do.
As we looked at that, that was one of the things we talked about in the meeting.
But they came in and did six legal lots of record off of an unimproved street. And so, like I said, the idea, I always thought, was divide that property when it was in the private hands, and that all lots would back up to the, to extend Delwood property, not to do legal lots of record.
Yeah, I'm sure that's most of them's idea.
Well, that'd be great if they would kind of get on the same page.
That was my understanding as well, when they submitted it in last time, it was to add this property into the lots on, off of Delwood Drive West, and-
Yeah, one of the owners of one of those five lots came before y'all and said he was one of the members of the LLC that was buying, or had bought it, or was going to buy it. Not all of the owners on the east side in Delwood were a member of LLC, so I think way it stands now, and correct me if I'm wrong, this land is owned by a couple of them, but not all, one, two, three, four, five, six of them.
Right.
So, you could have four of them agree, "Yeah, I'm going to re-subdivide this and incorporate that back into my big lot," but the other two might say, "No, I don't want to spend $50,000 or whatever to do that, and I'm to heck with it," and somebody could go build a lot, build a house on that lot.
And again, that, my understanding was, the way it was presented was that it was going to be part of the lots, that's the reason we approved it last time, so.
So, so as we sit here today, this subdivision exists as it's presented there, and the only difference in this recommendation and what's already been approved is the option to have the Delwood people bring it in their lots?
There's no difference in what has been submitted and what staff is recommending. The difference is, the applicant is requesting the removal of the condition of the cul-de-sac.
So, currently, there are six, six lots as one lot?
There's tentative approval for six lots.
So, what we want in here to say? Y'all have already approved this subdivision, but plat hadn't been recorded.
Thank you.
Oh, zero? Yeah. One lot or six lots?
Six.
Six, six. When they came down here.
Yes.
It was six lots, just like this. And that was, now that-
July?
July, okay. I wasn't even here to-
Or August.
So-
So, they're coming back looking-
I'd love getting a cul-de-sac, because even hearing this is going to be incorporated doesn't necessarily mean, because we don't see that on the drawing, first of all, we still see it as a separate lot of record, and all they want removed is the cul-de-sac on an inferior street.
Or at least not to have to build it right now, you know. I have seen some other cases-
I don't think we do that with any subdivision where we, you know, it's-
Things being attached to land disturbance permits, you know, that would trigger a construct cul-de-sac.
But it's too small of a lot to trigger a disturbance.
Well, what you, what you've got out there, the cul-de-sac is somewhat next to impossible to construct, to any kind of design standard. There is a cul-de-sac, a makeshift one, that's down there now, it's a gravel turnaround that's used. At the end of the gravel drive, and you can see that on the little, the little drawing, there's a pretty substantial ditch that's through there. So, a little dotted line, I think, represents where, where a ditch is. So, to construct cul-de-sac is a lot more than just constructing a cul-de-sac. I mean, it's a pretty complicated thing, and even still, even if you took the full, almost the full depth of the lot, I don't know that you can get the real estate that is necessary there to construct a functional, modern, you know, modern subdivision type cul-de-sac.
You could construct something better than what's there today.
Well, what you've got there today is very functional. I think it's serving, serving all the needs of anything that goes down there, it's just part of it, happens to be rocked, it's just not paved.
But there'll be six more homes and activity that isn't there today?
That's not the plan, though. The plan is not to build.
Why don't you, why doesn't the plan come back exactly as it is? Which is the extension of the Delwood property owner.
I understand what you're saying, the plan isn't that today, but one of these people sells their house, and then this guy's saying, "Hey, I got a lot behind me, it's worth $100,000. I'm going to sell it, build a house and sell it." So, I understand where you're coming from, but legally, according to subdivision regulations, we have to require that. Yes?
So, I'll take one more, too. It says, "The purpose of this application is to create six new lots of record from one, which is that."
Correct. They have, they purchased the overall piece of property from the city. It was a meets and bounds parcel, it's the former Grant Street, Florida Street Extension. They have tentative approval for the six lots, but it-
By this planning commission, it was approved by this planning commission several months ago for those six lots.
Correct.
That's when she says tentative approval, it just hasn't been recorded yet.
And they're wanting to remove a condition from that previous approval, which is issue number one on the top of page four.
So, if you, I'm sorry, go ahead, Alan. Well. Y'all approved it, but it hasn't been recorded. So, before they record it, they want to come and remove that cul-de-sac condition.
We wasn't able to record it because it's not signed, and it won't be signed until the construction of a cul-de-sac.
And-
And that's what we don't want, you know, we're not planning on any construction at all, so we just-
If y'all approved this according to the staff recommendation, it's the same as if they didn't, weren't even here today. Today, before this application, they could build the cul-de-sac, these lots into the Delwood lots. If y'all approve it with the staff, with the staff recommendation, it's the same place they're in. If y'all deny it, we're the same place they're in today. Yeah, I think that's what makes it so unusual, it's the first time I've ever seen an application come back that we've already approved, wanting, basically wanting changes to what we've already approved.
In the absence of-
Yeah, it's rare for, to be at this soon, usually that might be 20 years later. Right, yeah, right.
In the absence of the actual owners being here?
And, you know, they, they could have appealed, appealed it to court, if they didn't like the conditions, they could have appealed it.
I was only asking, in the absence of the actual owner or owners, whatever that makeup might be, would it be appropriate to-
They're here.
Hold this over, or they are here? Can they, can they, could they potentially come down and speak and tell us a little bit more about-
Sure.
What their bigger, longer term intent is? I don't, I mean, I don't know if that's appropriate for us to ask that, but-
So, what are you asking, to hold over for what purpose?
Well, I didn't know, I mean, I didn't know if the actual owners are here, he's just representing-
Well, even if the owners come down here and say, "Yeah, this is our intent," and that doesn't mean anything.
Well, I know, but we would have a, maybe a little bit more information about how to make a, make a decision.
They could clean this up if intent, intent on actual facts.
Yeah, it might be that we say, say, "Take this back and, and bring this back as a-
Even if all the owners come down here and say, "This is our plan, we're going to do this, we're going to do that," until they do, they do it. They don't have to legally do it, and they could go sell, if y'all approve it without the cul-de-sac, they could go build their houses.
Well, I agree, but we just don't know what-
And the owner was here last time, and he's told you what his intent was. They just haven't come through with that. Are you representing one of the applicant, or are you speaking against the application?
Yeah, I'm with the applicant.
Okay, so you're for, so we have, or do we have anybody that's going to be speaking against the application? Do we, have we gathered?
Well, he's the first speaker for, Mr. Stewart, are there any other speakers in favor of this application?
Where is buyer attracted to this two of you?
In the pre-purchase meeting, under that.
Just, Mr. Stewart, are you finished with your part?
Buyer's going to require a cul-de-sac or hammerhead, I guarantee you.
Yeah, there's a way to do this better than that's what's there.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. May we have speaker number two in favor of this application?
Good afternoon. T. Bruce McKinnon. I'm in favor of this application. I don't know if you-
Where do you live?
I live at 322 West Delwood Drive.
Are you one of the owners that backed up for the?
Yes.
Okay. And what are, what are y'all's plans?
We don't have any plans. We stopped the plans from a previous developer. The purpose of buying the property was to eliminate any development, and the process that we took was, was directed to us by Brad Christensen to develop it into individual lots and line them up directly behind our property, and, and that's what we've done.
You know, are y'all going, are y'all going to move forward with that plan?
Yes.
And why, and I'm not trying to cross-examine you here, I'm just trying to get to the bottom line, for the commission. When is that going to be done, and why hasn't that been done? Your tentative approval is good for a year. Why haven't y'all, or do y'all plan within that year to come in with a new plat incorporating those six areas into your lots?
No, there was no intention for us to incorporate those lots behind us directly into, to our lots and make our lots bigger. There was, there was, there was no plan for us to do that. I mean, if we're forced to do that, we would have to talk among those homeowners to do that, but ultimately, we, we took this, this route because that's, we thought was the right route.
Sure.
Margaret, if, if that tentative approval expires after a year, it goes back to what it meets and bounds? To me, the easiest solution, if they're not intending to do that, to bring, incorporate those in, they should come in with a one lot subdivision.
Yeah.
And that way, they, they could build one house on it, I guess, and then a cul-de-sac wouldn't be needed then, maybe just a driveway.
I think if I remember correctly-
Yeah, it fronts on Grant, so, you know, it's-
I think we suggested that, and Mr. McKinnon mentioned that they wanted to spread the purchase price out throughout several of the neighbors, is that the intent?
That's correct.
Of why y'all wanted to subdivide it in the first place?
Yes.
But you don't have all the neighbors in the LLC?
We don't.
But if you had a one subdivision, everyone could invest, the people that wanted to invest could invest in that one lot at least.
Correct.
I think the one thing that, that we have for the commission, probably, not goes for everyone, but based on the way it was presented originally, that we have a problem with is, is coming in and developing and building six individual houses on these lots. That's not, because that's not the way it was presented. So, maybe, I think either the solution is do the cul-de-sac or connect them into your existing lots is, is the most feasible solution, you know, the way I said, but-
All right. And again, we would, we would just need to, you know, meet with the neighbors and see if they want to do that, do that. I don't think there'll be any opposition to that, I don't think, I can't speak for everyone, but that was, this is just the direction we took.
Yeah, I believe when the, when the conversations that was had internal with the city, not constructing a cul-de-sac, it was based on there not being any houses there, being individual lots that would tie back, back to Delwood, thus not changing any scenario, you know, not adding any additional traffic over. But I mean, that was what I, what we understood, that was the neighborhood's desire and their reason to not have to construct the cul-de-sac, and that they were not going to be going, there was not going to be any additional traffic on that road, so not a changed condition of what was there, was there.
Until they came in with the six.
Yeah.
Fronting Durant.
Yeah. I would say we didn't, I don't know that we had any knowledge of there not being all the respective property owners being part of, we thought it was an entire group that was coming in.
That backed up.
And it was every individual lot, so.
And that's the reason it passed.
Yeah. I mean, actually, all of the property owners are in agreement. The reason that it was purchased in, it was purchased in my LLC, that was a requirement from the city. They wanted one buyer, so I had an LLC, and I purchased it. So, you know, we have an agreement with the five homeowners that all agree to what we're doing.
So, they will want to extend their property, is what you're saying. You just, I'm getting confused, because you said not everyone who was part of the LLC was also an abutting neighbor, so I'm getting a little conflicted information.
The only reason that my LLC purchased it was, that was a requirement from the city. They wanted one individual, one entity to purchase it. I purchased it under my LLC, which is owned by my wife and I.
Or they could have, all six owners could have created a new- Or they could have, all six owners could have created a new LLC and bought it that way.
But if you're saying everyone who participated, you have, you have a relationship that they're all abutting property owners, that when you use your LLC, so the simple things to do a subdivision that extends their property lot.
But you're missing that. They wanted the lots lined up with their individual properties, but they did not agree and want to take in those and to make bigger lots fronting the Delwood subdivision. They want to hold them in line with their lots that front the Delwood subdivision, but they do not want to extend and make a single lot with their house on it.
Yeah, my guess is that there's, you know, some probably that want to make it part of their lots, and some that want to probably try to resell it.
Possibly.
I mean, that would be normal, but-
Yeah, there's certainly no, sorry, there's certainly no, we have no agenda whatsoever to build anything. Obviously, I know what's happier leaves that open for the possibility for future owners or whatever, but there's no, we have no agenda. Actually, we have an agreement among those neighbors that say, if you sell your house, you offer this lot in part of selling that house. That's the first step you have to take. Second step, would you sell that lot to the left or the right of one of the others? So, there's no agenda whatsoever for us.
Right, but it would be a legal lot that even the next person, maybe this owner of the Delwood property isn't interested, but the next one could pick up a permit and bring out a, because it's a separate lot, it'd be a separate renovation.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Are there any further questions for Mr. McKinnon? Is there anyone else that would like to speak? We may have to do more.
Good afternoon. I'm Carl Deagle, 354 West Delwood. Personally, let me apologize. We did not mean this whole transaction, this mess for you guys. It's been ridiculous. And best, and you and I probably are going to respectfully disagree. When we put a lot together, we came to the city, and we basically said we wanted to purchase tract of land. The city was the first group that basically said it would be easier for us to buy this thing and subdivide it into six separate lots.
I don't know what the operation-
So, I understand, but I'm just telling you, so the six separate lots was not a, it wasn't our mindchild. This was something that the city said it would be easier to purchase it and subdivide it into six as opposed to having the city go back and change everything and then stretch the lines out. So, that's how the six lots came about. Second, we've had numerous conversations with Brad Christensen, and Mr. Amberger was present at these conversations, and the city made it very clear that they had no intention to ever build a cul-de-sac or turnaround back there. They said they have to do drainage, the cost due to cul-de-sac, and what it would do back there would be cost prohibitive. And we, and at that point, we actually asked them, we said, look, we'll be happy to do an easement where we can, you know, if ever a cul-de-sac needs to be in, the city can own the property and do that. But, and the city agreed. That one word, constructed, was into the contract. We did not catch. We signed the contract. Yes, I agree, we signed a contract. But we agreed to give the easement to the city to do a cul-de-sac, but we never agreed to build a cul-de-sac. It would be tens of thousands of dollars. And so, so we came, you know, when we came in, we didn't want the property to start with. We really, everything we heard originally was basically, there's going to be a multifamily unit going up behind your house, it's like this big, and we jumped into action pretty quick, and to get six homeowners, or five homeowners, to come to agreement to purchase a piece of property in two days that didn't really want it, and then all of a sudden to take the upkeep on for the next several months, was, I mean, it was a big ordeal, and we got it taken care of. And I'll also tell you that we have maintained that property. Most of the property gets, some of the property is cut every two weeks, some of it is cut every four weeks, but it has been cut once a month for those people that faced Duranty Drive. We don't even see the, but we are, we do have a landscape company that comes in, Magnolia Landscape comes in once a month, cuts the property. They give me the bill, and I reach out to the other homeowners, and I get the money to pay them off. So, we're doing, we are trying to be good corporate citizens, and, you know, to the Duranty neighbors and to us, we, and what he said, we don't have any agendas. It is green space. We, nobody has, nobody has some secret plan to build property back there. That's just not in the cars. Now, could something happen, and somebody say, yeah, but I can't plan for every contingency, you know, and I don't think you can make a legal document that could plan for every contingency. All we can tell you is what we plan to do now and for the foreseeable future, and we're just ask y'all to grant us removal of the word construction so we can get this thing done, we can pay our taxes like normal citizens, and we can move on and let you guys deal with other things besides Duranty Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Deagle.
You go ahead, you go ahead and explain that.
Are there any questions?
Okay, Margaret just came up with a good idea, but this would have to be with their consent. One way to resolve this, since they don't want to extend it, would be to, and they already, would be to identify those six lots as common areas A, B, C, D, E, and F, and have it deeded to the Delwood Property Owners Association. They got their green space forever and ever. But there's no legal lots, well, yeah, there's not a lot to build on. It's common area, and, you know, the only issue with that is their issue is who's paying for it, and the whole Delwood Association. But from the city's viewpoint, to resolve this, that's probably-
I don't want to complicate it, but Delwood, when they started our subdivision, was complicated to start. Apparently, the Del Shamps, when they built the big lots on the back, which is Lot Six right there, that's one of them, and I believe Lot Five, they excluded those lots from the Delwood subdivision. So, if you go look at the Delwood subdivision, those lots aren't even subdivisioned, so they have their own set of rules. Now, the other 41 homes, I'm the president of the subdivision, they all, but we don't really have a, we're not taking up money for the subdivision. It's really a, we're all on our common interest. We don't have money going in to keep up a common space or anything like that, so, and so respectfully, your recommendation, I think, would really create trouble because Lot Five and Five aren't technically part of the subdivision.
The area would be, whether the corner, big corner lot is or isn't, that could be common space deeded to the Properties Association. But, you know, the issue here is we've got, now, how many people are in your, that LLC? One, two, or three, one. So, we got one guy paying for it for the whole benefit of the entire subdivision. That's not the city's problem. We're trying to figure out a way that we can benefit them, but the staff and I are adamant we cannot remove that condition. If they want to keep the six-lot subdivision, the cul-de-sac has to remain in a condition.
A cul-de-sac as an easement, or could it be built?
Nope, constructed, because those are six legally erected that can be built on. If you or the McMurphys or anybody else that live on that street sell their lot next week, and, you know, that back lot is, comes with that ownership, then they could sell it.
I don't think that we're going to be able to get the neighbors to pitch in and purchase $50,000 for a cul-de-sac, and you're going to force us to sell that piece of property to somebody else for development.
But the idea of getting it into your HOA-
I mean, I don't know what else to do, because the cul-de-sac has, I mean-
But if you could get the maintenance of it into your HOA, and then the borders of your subdivision would change to take in this common area, and then you pay dues to your homeowners association, or you don't have that.
And again, it feels to me, we're being penalized for doing exactly what the city told us to do.
Well, I-
Okay, the city, and Nick was there, and Brad Christensen was there, and we, and the city attorney was there. Okay, we had multiple people present. Okay, they, that will, I will be happy to call and say, hey, you know what, we need you to basically tell us what the city said, because the city was very clear, they were totally in favor, David was in favor of us purchasing this subdivision, or this piece of property, breaking it up, and then just leaving it alone. Okay, now, all of a sudden, more conditions are being put on us, and, you know, it's, that is not ever what was intended, Mr. Rich, and you like to say that we-
They didn't know about that you were going to come to the planning commission and do six legal lots of record.
We never came to the city and said, we never said we're going to make this thing one lot, and we're going to join our lot. The city told us the best, easiest way to do it was to separate it, have separate lots.
Mr. Deagle, can I address your terms?
If we're done with it, why don't you just incorporate it into the lot?
Right, right.
Because we were following, like, what the city told us to do. We, we, the council even said that's probably the easiest thing to do is to purchase and break it up into separate.
Right, well, and the reality is, I mean, when it was, we're just commissioners.
I understand. I'm frustrated because it's like, he said, she said, and it's just-
Right, and the way we, the way we as a commission approved it was six lots that would be, not be developed, it would be connected to the lots in Delwood. So, that's the way, the condition that we approved it upon. Now, you've got the cul-de-sac requirement, because if it were to be developed, then the cul-de-sac has to be there. I mean, that'd be a requirement for fire, traffic, and all of it.
And I'm okay to say, you know, if you want to say, if it becomes, the cul-de-sac needs to be put in, but if we're maintaining it as green space, no cul-de-sac necessary. That's, I'm okay with that. I think we're all okay. And I apologize, I'm hard of hearing, if y'all were discussing that up here, and I missed that piece, but I don't think that, I mean, if you're telling us, yes, you can subdivide it, and if you keep it green space, no building of a cul-de-sac or anything has to happen, if all of a sudden we go and develop, you know, this beautiful Delwood place subdivision, and then we have to put in a cul-de-sac, I think we would probably come up with some agreement on that. But for us to have to take a piece of property that we didn't intend, intend to get, and now say to the homeowners that you have to, everybody has to drop 15 grand more each into this thing to build a turnaround so that the city can have fire truck, I just don't think that's fair.
I understand that comment. It might not be fair, but unfortunately, that's a subdivision regulations, and that's what fire department requires for safety. You know, we-
Well, now, the fire department's been consulted on this, and they said that we wouldn't need to do it unless we built, you can, and Nick Amberger told me that yesterday.
To legally approve, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but to legally approve a subdivision before it can be signed by all the city's staff, it has to, that cul-de-sac has to be corrupted before the plan can be recorded. I mean, that's just our rules and regulations.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Mr. Amberger.
In the absence, the sense of the real estate staff being here, unfortunately, I don't see anything, would it be appropriate to hold this over and let them come and explain conversations that they may have had with the applicant and make sure everybody hears everything? I mean, I hate to, the city has been trying to work with the applicant, and I think it would just be appropriate to let them, let them come and say what they've, directions that they get.
That's okay with them. I have no problem. I do have one more possibility I can, Margaret, about while we go through the rest of the agenda, but we can vote.
Thank you, Mr. Deagle. I think there was a fourth person that indicated he'd like to speak. Azar Eze.
And this is in favor.
Yeah.
My name is Tom Rigdon. I live on Duranty Drive, John F. Berman, and I'm still lost on what's going on. All these conversations here, going back and forth and stuff like that. We're here because we want the cul-de-sac maintained. We live in straight part of Duranty Drive, and that cul-de-sac is a turnaround for all emergency vehicles, UPS, Fest Fest, mail trucks, delivery trucks, and everything. So, I don't know who owns what, because I've gotten lost in all this situation, but we would like to see that cul-de-sac maintained. I think the agreement was that the city was going to enhance it at one time.
It, well, when it wasn't going to back up.
Right, right.
When it was going to back up.
So, I don't know what I can add besides, we'd like to keep that cul-de-sac for emergency vehicles.
Well, that's what we're trying to preserve for the development.
Because you can see if there's two 90-degree turns, sharp turns going out. If they have to back out, that's going to be a problem, but they can back around and your lawn tear it up to get back out. I'm in the ambulance, I don't care where you turn around. But it's a situation we like to see. Now, can you satisfy everybody? I don't know. They're not over there. They don't live where we do. They don't have a cul-de-sac, emergency vehicle has to turn around. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Then we will move on to application number six, which is 2409 Wolfridge Road. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Oh, Azar Eze, Azar Eze and Associates, 6170 Omni Park Drive. I'm representing the applicant on this zoning application. It was recommended for denial because the staff did not feel like we had answered either one, any one of the four questions. I feel like we answered number two. I've provided three documents that have highlighted, sentence on there stating why we were recommending this or felt like it ought to be approved. I've also attached the future zoning map, which shows that 50% of the boundary of this property will abut I-1 zoning in the future, and therefore, we feel like this ought to also be included in that proposed zoning and be included in I-1.
Get staff to comment.
Well, the future zoning map that Mr. Azar Eze is referring to is actually the future land use map, which is a proposed future consideration, so that, let's say, if one of the property owners that is in the area shown as gray on that map would like to come in and request a rezoning, then our future land use map indicates that we would recommend perhaps that the rezoning for light industrial use, it would be consistent with the future land use map. But this is not a future zoning map. This is just a suggestion of what can be considered in the future for these properties. So, the properties that are shown in gray on this map are currently in commercial use, and they're in uses that would be consistent with an I-1 district. However, the existing zoning on this section of Wolfridge Road, essentially, all of it is zoned for single-family residential use, except for the site in question, and then off towards the right about several thousand feet where there is some industrially-zoned property.
I looked around in this area, staff, and just curious, I mean, do we foresee more houses, houses being built on this lot? It seems like to be a more industrial area and more likely to be used as industrial. First question. Second question, would the tax assessment on an I-1 lot be of greater value to the city versus an R-1 lot?
I'll take a member of ours. We can't answer tax questions.
That's not a legal reason to approve the subdivision, uh, zone.
And it's B-3 now. It's not R-1.
Correct. It is B-3 now.
It's been zoned to B-3.
It's been B-3 for how long?
2011, I'd say.
Well, the B-3 came to existence after a plumbing company opened up on that property as a alleged home occupation, when in fact, it was a full-blown plumbing company. And when we found out about that, we asked them to go through the appropriate process to get the property into compliance. They managed to create a legal lot, they managed to get the rezoning completed, but then they never finished any of the required site improvements.
Going back to Mr. Acheson's first question, we're looking at that, that there are homes there now. There are homes, residential development and occupied across the street and adjacent to the south, even along Field Road, while you have a lot of non-conforming uses, that of course, we're taking into account on the future land use map. You also have residential there as well. So, there are several things to look at in terms of rezoning requests. While Mr. Azar Eze brings up the issue of the future land use map, you also have to look at the element of timing. Is this right? Is this property, while not on the flume, as industrial? You know, is it the right time for this area to be transitioning to industrial, given the homes that are existing right now?
Thank you. Store.
Auto parts store.
There is no, there is no I-1, et cetera, probably about a half-mile or more down the road. There are a cross-Field Mill Road, you have the auto parts place, and a storage yard. Semi-trailers.
Mr. Cameron, I think you're looking at the future land use map.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Azar Eze? Thank you. Is there anyone else here in favor of this application?
My, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My wife and I, we were the owners of the property when we originally-
Excuse me.
Name and address. Oh, name and address. I'm Rennie Thomas, and, uh, address is 358 South Lawrence Street, Mobile, Alabama. Sorry. My wife and I are the owners of the property. Now, I'm, myself, I'm a truck driver. I own a couple of trucks, small trucking company. Now, I had no idea as to the history on the property when my wife and I purchased it. We were just looking for a nice, big spot so we could park trucks. And, uh, we were shown this property. Now, all around the property, it's basically deserted, other than those few houses right here on Wolf Ridge. We wouldn't be disturbing any of that Feed Mill Road or any of that back there in the feed store. We just want to be able to have access off of Wolf Ridge so we can park trucks, so they won't be on the side of the road or in grocery store parking lots and things of that nature.
I don't like that idea.
It won't, we won't be running any deep type of business out of there, other, it's just going to be a parking lot.
How many trucks do you anticipate parking on that spot?
Well, it's quite a bit of room, and we estimate somewhere around forty to fifty. Because not only would I be parking there, but I would make it available for other guys that live in the immediate area.
Other owner-operators.
To park in there, because right now, our options are limited. We gotta either park almost in Mississippi and drive home, where we want to spend time at home.
We're talking eighteen-wheelers?
Yes, ma'am.
So, you're saying you have a large number of people that live in the area that have, that are truck drivers?
Yes, it's other drivers, just like myself. We all have the same issue. When we come home, there's nowhere for us to park, and we end up parking in places that I'm sure are not favorable when it comes to big trucks.
So, you want to use it as a truck park lot for owner-operator trucks?
Yes.
Who live in the vicinity?
Yes.
Are there any questions from the commissioners?
Yes, a question for staff. In the I-1, is the aggregate surfacing allowed by right, or is that I-2?
Well, the zoning ordinance was amended so that a parking surface for required parking in an I-1 district would have to be paved, but then any excess could be aggregate. So, this use, not necessarily have required parking. So, it may be that they would be able to use an aggregate surface, since they're only storing vehicles there.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yes, now, they could consider a lower zoning district, such as a B-5 district. However, in that district, you would have to pave the parking area.
You gotta pay the B-3?
They would also have to pave it into B-3.
So, that's the whole reason.
It's not allowed in B-3.
Well, the use isn't allowed, but then the parking surface would have to be paved.
B-3.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Further questions from the commissioners? Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone present that would like to speak against it? Thank you. We will move on to number seven, 4213 Halls Mill Road and Alden Drive.
Jerry Byrd, Byrd Survey Company, 2609 Halls Mill Road, basically in agreement with everything. The subdivision condition for engineering comments, item E, add a note about historical imperious area. States Lot A, none, which, that's understandable, it's a vacant lot. Lot B, none, there's an existing building on Lot B. I think possibly that should be revised. Any new development would have no impervious.
Yeah, I look at those nineteen eighty-four aerials, and there's probably nothing shown on there. If I pulled off the wrong aerial map, we can resubmit and look up a different one and put it, put the correct slide number on there. I don't have any information to change that number.
Okay.
On here now, so we'll have to take it up. If it gets approved, we'll take it up and look at it and see what was there in eighty-four.
Okay, all right.
Well, that is something that y'all can work out, but.
Yes.
Okay, after the fact.
Okay, not a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak against it? Thank you. We'll move on to number eight, which is 605 I-X-S Street, Texas Place. Is the applicant present? And in agreement with the recommendations? Are, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to it? Thank you. We'll move on to number nine, 3673 and 3679 Airport Boulevard. Is the applicant present? And in agreement with all of the recommendations? Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in, speak in option to it? Thank you. We'll move to number ten. I can find it. West side of Bucker Road West, applicant present? Is the applicant present and in agreement with the recommendations? He has indicated full agreement. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to it? Thank you. Number eleven, 65 Mobily Tree, applicant present and has indicated his agreement with the recommendations. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this applicant? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to it? We will move into the deliberation phase. Number one, Win Gateway, extending to the, extending to the south terminus of Widgeon Drive. It has been recommended that the one-year extension to the subdivision be approved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The application is, the motion is approved. Number two, 3450 Gerby Road.
Move to hold over to December nineteenth.
Second.
All in favor of the holdover?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. We will hear it on December the nineteenth. Thirty-seven twenty-one, the Cedars.
Move to approve based on staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and, properly moved and seconded, all in favor of the applicant?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. Number four, 265 Woodlands Avenue.
Move to approve, subject to staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. Five, south side of Grant Street.
Staff would like a holdover to December nineteenth, to see what they can do within the city departments.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Preferably seconded, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? That application will be held over to December the nineteenth. Application number six, 2409 Wolf Ridge Road.
I'm going to make a move.
Do you have any options as far as, you know, the zone? I mean, you'd mentioned B-5, I mean, are there any other options? Obviously, this is, you know, an industrial area right in the middle of a residential area, but it might not be that unreasonable to grant the request based on the conditions surrounding the area.
The use can be allowed in B-5. However, the parking would all then have to be paved.
And then full tree.
And then full tree and landscaping.
And they should get it.
The applicant could seek variances, which would then be, would allow zoning to remain as is, with a use variance for a trucking company only, and then no other I-1 or B-5 uses. And he could also request surface variances and other variances as well. The application before the commission right now is for I-1. The commission does have the ability to make recommendations of other zoning classifications other than that what is, what was requested. So, you could recommend to council to B-5, but he would still have all of the other requirements with which he had to comply.
Can I ask a question? What is, what could go into an I-1 in the future, if it's not limited to this truck parking conditions?
You could have warehousing, you know, outside storage, like manufacturing, you know, it's basically going back to the chart, thirty-seven-page chart, and just run down the, you know, the list of everything that's allowed in I-1, so it's.
And we don't have a right to restrict it to just one type of use unless the applicant makes that a use condition.
Correct.
It's on to your use condition.
Nor do we have the ability to make it B-5 and remove the asphalt requirement.
You cannot.
Right.
Because that is a requirement of zoning ordinance.
Board of Adjustment would have to do that.
As far as development is concerned, and that is strictly under the purview of the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Is there not an option for, to put in other types of parking surfaces, if it's something that the cities and their.
It's based on.
More environmental issues?
It's based on zoning, and that allowance for the aggregate is only in the industrial districts. It's not currently in commercial districts. And I'm sorry, Mr.
Yeah, a question for staff. If we're recommending a B-5 and telling the applicant he the option to go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment and request a variance for aggregate parking, what would be the staff's recommendation? Because they'll be asked to prove a hardship to be allowed aggregate, and they're often very strict on that, and I don't know if he would be able to articulate something that would fall under their tight rules of hardship, other than the hardship is that I was denied at Planning Commission for going I-1.
Um, you know, the applicant would have to make his case for hardship, at which point, you know, we would then be able to present an analysis and a report. In general, though, which I think is to your point, the fact that the rezoning's been denied is not necessarily a hardship associated with the property. What's unique about this property that keeps it from being used as any other conforming B-3 use? You know, that would, that would be difficult to prove to the board.
Yeah, it seems like in twenty-eleven, it was rezoned from R-1 B-3 for a plumbing lay-down yard and multiple buildings to be constructed, which is a much more intense use, in my opinion, than parking tractor-trailers. And then nothing has been developed from then until now, now. And so, an argument for changing in condition, moving from B-3 to I-1, over eight years of nothing happening after we moved it from R-1 to B-3 very quickly, doesn't seem unreasonable to me. I understand the limiting the I-1 potential uses in the future, so maybe it is a voluntary use restriction from the applicant may get him to the place he needs to be. But I tend to lean to rezoning to I-1 because of the changing conditions in the area.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I mean, the easiest thing for the applicant would be to give him the I-1 and self-restrict to what you're, what they're wanting to use it for.
Well, if you do that and you restrict it just to that one use, that's contract zoning, and you can't do that. I mean, you can, there can be self-restrictions.
So, he could pull out certain.
That pulls some of the more offensive uses out, but you can't say, I'm not going to use any of them but for this one use.
Right.
That's illegal.
But I would say.
That's what a variance is for. A variance, you can't get one use.
In vacant shopping centers and out in, especially in West Mobile, people parking their, their trucks, and it's a big, big problem. So, there is definitely a need for a location. I just don't represent this area, and I really can't make that leap.
Taylor, I'm sorry, Taylor, to answer your question, I think from a legal viewpoint and from the neighborhood viewpoint, getting a variance or trying to get a B-5 variance and a parking variance is the better way to, it's quicker, you don't have to go through the notification, I mean, the advertisement, the city council, and I just think for the future of that area, that's probably the best alternative if I was advising them.
I agree. I've just seen some of those meetings where they get really particular on what they count as a hardship, and, you know, I think fiscal reason is important, but they don't seem to. Because this, I imagine the business model of allowing his neighbors to park their tractor-trailers on there doesn't make sense if he has to asphalt the entire property.
The, the, um, parking surface variance is a no-brainer. Those are given all the time when the use is for eighteen-wheelers. There's a warehouse or a parking lot.
Okay.
We grant those all the time, and whether or not they can prove a hardship, you know, I've seen some variances granted where there wasn't really one, and some denied where there really was. So, staff can't make that prediction, but I just think legally, that's the best option.
Staff need, do we need recommendations to go to the B-5?
That would still have to come up to council, though.
Pardon?
The B-5 would have to come up.
Exactly, it's a longer process.
Well, the.
But even to get to.
To go to zoning as opposed to a variance.
But he's got to have the reason to be able to park them there legally regardless, right? You can't do it on B-3, I heard earlier.
Correct.
So, keep it B-3.
Yeah, he has to come up for rezoning.
Right.
For use variance.
Or, oh, I see. He could do a, a use variance and just go to the Board of Adjustments.
Correct.
Oh, for the use.
You get two variances.
Oh, I see. That it would revert back to the B-3 when that particular entity.
That's correct.
Yes.
Although it's going to be successful.
It would stay B-3, you just have a use variance.
Yeah.
That's true.
So, we just need, if that's the case, and that's the best plan, to deny the application.
I think that makes sense and could be a path forward. It sounds like there's a hardship if the neighborhood consists of multiple truck drivers, and y'all are having to park your tractor-trailer, trailer on in areas that are causing a dangerous situation. That is a hardship. So, I do think there's a chance you could be successful in the variance process.
Yeah, I feel pretty confident.
And if I may, we had a similar situation within the past year. If the commission is encouraging of the applicant pursuing variances, you can hold this application over until the second meeting in January, so that way it allows those applications to be heard by the board. If those are unsuccessful, the applicant can then come back and pick up with this request and for y'all to hear it at the second meeting in January.
What was the date of the second meeting in January?
The twenty-third.
Excuse me, Mr. Azarisi, do you have any comment to make about our conversation?
I'm sorry?
I just wondered if you wanted to weigh in on the options we were discussing at this point.
Let me make sure I understand, they're going to allow a lot of you to go for a variance, postpone this, come back second meeting in January. Just in case. And then after you get that decision, come back to.
Correct. So, you wouldn't have to come back?
Hopefully, you won't have to come back.
It doesn't require this body, if you succeed.
Okay, thank you.
Move to hold over to the January twenty-third meeting.
Properly moved and seconded, this application will be held over until, till the.
Twenty-third.
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 Where you'll be able to be heard again if you need to be. Thank you. Number.
Seven.
Seven. I just got it planned in on my agenda. Um.
Halls Mill.
Excuse me, just a minute. Halls Mill Road and Alden Drive.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations for the subdivision and the zoning amendment, with making a note that item four E to be, details to be worked out with engineering and the applicant.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number eight, 605 Texas Place.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion passes. Number nine, 3673 Airport Boulevard.
We take, take these separately, please. The put, I'd move to approve based on staff. The PUD, move to approve based on staff recommendations and finding acts A through F.
Is there a second?
Second.
Properly, is there any discussion? Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the subdivision move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
And he's properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Number 10. West side of Booker Road West.
Subdivision move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Planning approval, move to approve based on staff recommendations, findings of acts A and B.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
All opposed to that motion? Motion passes. Number 11. 65 Mobile Street.
PUD, move to approve based on staff recommendations, findings of acts A, B, and C.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Planning approval, move to approve based on staff recommendations, findings of acts A and B.
A and D.
A and B is a void.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
All opposed to that motion? Motion passes. Is there any further business, Ms. Bass?
Uh, just an update for the commission. The appeal of the apartments for the PUD on East Drive, that was appealed, and the city council overturned the planning commission's approval.
Thank you.
Yes.
You didn't review it as a PUD.
That's correct.
All right. There being no further business, we are adjourned.
Thank you.